Good afternoon, I'd like to call the March 15th meeting of the Johnson County Community College Trustees Board of Trustees to order. Let the minutes reflect that Trustees Lindstrom and Cross are absent. And would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to the roll call, I'd like to ask the trustees to consider a change in the order of the agenda. We have three awards tonight, and we have some guests present for those awards, and we have six or seven speakers lined up in the open forum. So I think as a courtesy to our guests, I would like a motion to move item five, Awards and Recognizations, up to following roll call of our recognition of visitors.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. With that, Terry, roll call and recognition of visitors.
Okay. This evening's guests include Dick Carter, Christine Atkinson, Cheryl Batliner, Skylar Stooki, Dennis Batliner, Nick Cole, Ann Pescha, Blake Koger, Jackie Morrow, Jimmy Wold, Eric Roletter, Cress Elsener, Hillary Courier, Ava Courier, Pat Morrison, Katie Guyer, Andrew Guyer, Haley Guyer, and Donna Cravens.
Thank you. Awards and recognitions, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. We have three awards tonight. For the first one, I'd like to call Suzanne Mayhew to the podium, please.
Hello, my name is Suzanne Mayhew. I'm the Home State Coordinator at Johnson County Community College, and I have the pleasure tonight of honoring an incredible lady. But let me first start by saying that there's an expression that goes, "Family and fish are only good for three days." And those of you who have had relatives stay with you for more than a week can appreciate that there's some validity to that statement. Now, I want you to give some thought to what it takes to open your home for a semester, a year, or more, to a person that you've never met before, from a different country, who has different traditions, lifestyle, cultural practices, religions, and perhaps political views. Now, the people that I'm describing are people that come forward to serve as home state hosts within our program. These are people who truly appreciate cultural diversity and really want to make the difference in a life of a person from a faraway land. Nobody exemplifies this more than our guest tonight, Mrs. Pat Morrison. She truly, truly has made an incredible difference in the lives of many of our students. She hasn't hosted one student, she hasn't hosted two students, she hasn't hosted a dozen students, she's hosted thirty-five students over a thirty-year period. The impact that she's had on these students is truly, truly life-changing for many of them. Auntie Pat, as she's referred to by the students out of respect, is, she helps them with culture shock, with homesickness, with pronunciation of their English, with grammar, with helping with proofread essays. She's taught them how to clean bathrooms, she's taught them how to write thank-you notes, all of these life skills that are so, so important. And Pat didn't do this alone. Her late husband, Neil, was a car guy, and he made sure that every student that left their home, all thirty-five, by the time they left, they knew how to change a car, change a tire, knew how to change the oil, and knew how to check their tire pressure. So those are life skills that I'm still struggling with myself. But let's just say that, you know, all of us can agree that some of the traits of success of our students is being hardworking, being devoted, having a plan, having a vision for the future. But there's some things that are at the base of that, that are truly at the foundation, and a lot of it has to do with having a good home life. And that's what Pat has provided to over thirty-five students and their friends. So I can't think of anybody more deserving an unsung hero to recognize tonight than Pat Morrison.
Pat, we know that you have several words to say, because anybody that can express the fruits of kindness and gentleness and goodness and patience and perseverance, as you have with complete strangers, is certainly the highest honor. So congratulations and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pat and Suzanne. For our second award, I'd like to ask Debbie Eisenhower to the podium. Debbie is coordinator in our Staff and Organizational Development Department.
Thank you, Jo. Well, I have the honor, as the coordinator for our Leadership Institute program, it's a cohort that meets on an annual basis, February through December, to recognize one of the cohort members who was recognized, nominated, and selected amongst his peers, sixteen people in the cohort altogether, as the Servant Leader. And the award is presented to a member of the graduating class who demonstrates services to the community beyond JCCC, displays remarkable leadership within the institute program, and participates with thoughtful engagement, enthusiasm, passion, and exemplifies servant leader. This award was first developed in honor of David Kennedy, who used to work at the college. David was part of the 2008 cohort, and he passed away in 2009. And it was his fellow cohort members that asked Karen Martley, our teammate, to put this into place. So in addition to the award that Jason Arnett, who is our Assistant Manager of the Food Court and Coffee Bars, in addition to an acrylic award that he received that you'll get to see here in a bit, his name will also be displayed with the components of the Servant Leader Award on our training room wall in GEB 264. And Jason is joined by Gail Callahan, Lyndy Robinson, Judy Riley, Jim Lane, Phil Wegman, and Angie Soderland. So let me let you know what Jason's fellow cohort members said about him. I had to condense quite a bit, so please bear with me, but this is a glimpse. He is a dedicated and humble leader, and he always displays an others-first approach in all he does. Jason demonstrated great leadership in our sessions by being fully engaged. He's a great listener, he asks questions, he led in so many ways, and he was often the first person to ask questions when our leaders came in, you all will probably remember that, and always brought a very positive perspective to really any topic. He lives the mission of servant leadership every day. You can hear it in his words that he speaks, and you can see it in his interaction with his students. So pay attention, take a look at Jason when you're in the coffee bars or the dining services area, because you'll see him interacting not only with his students, but his student-staff workers, with fellow staff members and faculty, and anyone else who's here on campus with us. It's easy to see how much he cares for each and every person, especially members of his team. In Leadership Institute, he always spoke highly of them with regards to respect, and his focus was always on coaching them and developing them. So caring for students, as Jason did, especially those who face food insecurity and adequate funding for meals, in addition to work with his colleague Claudia Iodi Martin, they developed in partnership with Foundation what we now have on campus as the Cavalier Meal Share Program, because we care. And Jason kept us abreast this past year of the development of that, and that's part of the reason why he was nominated for Servant Leader. In a nutshell, Jason, you identify, you display qualities of a servant leader in every form and fashion, and we are very proud to have nominated you as our Servant Leader of 2017. Please come forward.
Yes, the award, the award, the award. All right.
Say a few words.
Deeply humbling and a true honor to be nominated by my peers, who I have an enormous amount of respect for, and all our guests who came in and talked to us and shared their experience with us. I've taken it all to heart, I have copious notes that I refer to often, so thank you for taking your time, and I'll try to live up to the honor that I've been given. So, thank you.
Congratulations, Jason.
I think just a brief comment. Nationwide, the issue of student wellness is a key discussion point and a key challenge in a number of colleges throughout the country. And so Jason, your work to try and help support students who are in need is greatly appreciated, and thank you very much for your service. Well deserved.
Thank you, Jason. Debbie, before you go, we'd like to thank you also on behalf of the college for all the work that you've done through your career here at Johnson County Community College. Debbie will be retiring. When's your last day?
March 30th.
March 30th.
March 30th.
You're not counting the days, are you?
My husband is. Twenty eighteen, yeah.
Well, thank you for your contributions.
Thank you. It's been a privilege, it's been a pleasure. Every, I guess, program or project I've touched has, it's just, it's been a learning experience for me, and it's offered me an opportunity to share what I hope are, I consider my skills and expertise with others here on campus, so continue your good work.
Thank you, Debbie. Congratulations, Jason. The final award for the evening is the Lockton Courage Award. Terry Harrison, could you please come up to the podium? Terry is the Director of our NARS program, which is the National Academy of Railway Sciences. Terry?
Hi. Nice to see you tonight. I would like to introduce you to my colleague and friend Lisa, and she's also kind of my workout buddy when we're, you know, up on the treadmill and stuff. So each year, the Kansas City Sports Commission has the Women's Sports Awards. Each year, they recognize every young woman who has earned a state championship, whether that's on a team or individually, and they come out and they parade, it's wonderful, there's hundreds of girls, and they're showing, you know, I'm a state champion. They also award six women, young girls, in the community that have displayed outstanding courage or contribution to the sport. This year, Lisa received the Lockton Courage Award. And there's a video, if you want to see it, I encourage you to, it's on the Johnson County Community College webpage. But this was held February 7th, it was at the Kansas City Convention Center. I think all her family was there too, or most of them. The Lockton Courage Award is, was presented for Lisa. She's a lifelong Special Olympian who has never let anything or anyone stop her from accomplishing her goals. She completes locally in swimming, track, field, basketball, volleyball, soccer, cheerleading, speed skating, skiing, bowling, and golf. You could do all the Olympics, summer and winter, right?
Yeah.
I gotcha. Okay. Not only does she compete in all of these sports, but she has skated on a global stage at the Special Olympics World Games and was featured on a performance during the closing ceremonies. And that's also on that video. You were nervous, weren't you?
Yes, I was nervous.
I could tell. Some of her highlights, once again, she skated in the U.S. Figure Skating Championships at the Sprint Center in January of 2017 in Kansas City. She has completed fourteen marathons. She gives some tips to Jo here, I know, on running, I've heard those, she's given me a few tips. She's a swimmer with the Kansas City Blazers and is a former world record holder in the 1500 meters.
Yep.
That's a lot of swimming. Okay. She has also worked for the college for twenty-nine years. The video of her featured her actually working here at the campus, and you were putting on your running shoes on the step.
Yeah, I was.
And you took off. So whenever you see someone running around the campus, it's her. She runs at least five to ten miles a day.
Yeah.
And like I said, you can see her running a lot. So Lisa, can I say this oath with you? This is the Special Olympics oath. I had to put it down. Can I say?
Let me be brave, but if I cannot be brave, let me be brave in the attempt.
So, this is her oath, and so this is the Special Olympian Oath. She typically competes for this, in the Kansas City Corporate Challenge for the Special Olympics.
Yes.
But not this year. This year, she's competing for Johnson County Community College, so we're going to get a lot more points and medals, so just going to put that plug in. So it was a very proud moment. There were over two thousand people at the sports awards.
Yes.
And we were very proud of you.
Yep.
There's lots of tears, so I'd like to recognize Lisa.
Just like to say thank you, and I love to be at Johnson County Community College.
Well, we say thank you.
Yeah.
For your courage and your commitment. Thanks, I very much appreciate it. Thanks.
Lisa and I have ran multiple races together, and I can tell you, she leaves me in the dust in every single one of them, so.
So are you going to be leading the lace-up competition in October? Is that?
No, Lisa's going to be leading.
We have the video to show.
Are we going to show a video?
I am forty-eight years old, bus tables for all the students at Johnson County Community College. Been doing that for twenty-nine years. After work, I run ten to five miles a day. I've done fourteen marathons. I swam with the Kansas City Blazer swim team. I used to hold the world record in my confidence in stability for the 1500.
This has given her the confidence to go out and meet people and be comfortable in crowds and to try new things.
Knowing the Special Olympics program, at the beginning of every competition, they say the Special Olympics oath.
Let me win, but if I cannot win, let me be brave in the attempt.
And nobody brings that to life more than Lisa. It's not about disability, it's not about any other thing than her going out and giving her best effort.
I have a busy schedule, but I find time to do all this stuff.
She's always on to the next thing, whether it's a new marathon, a new swim competition, a new chance to show off her ice skating ability.
I love ice skating. In figure skating, I've gone to four international games for Special Olympics.
I've worked with Lisa for about fourteen or fifteen years. My proudest is when she was selected to skate U.S. Nationals, that was here in 2017 in January. She got to skate down the Sprint Center and do her solo in front of thousands and thousands of skaters and athletes and crowds, the audience, and she was, first time I'd seen her, really, really nervous.
You don't show it when you're skating, actually, because you pull it inside of you, and you know you're going to do as well as you want to. I trained really hard for that one. I felt great because I got a standing ovation. Sport means courage. I actually want to try a stink thing.
You can do it, if anybody can, so congratulations and good luck to you. Thank you all for those awards and for the guests that attended. This is the time for the open forum. The open forum is an agenda item at each regularly scheduled board meeting. Speakers must register by completing the registration form prior to the open forum agenda item, giving name, city of residence, and name of any group he or she is representing, the topic and a brief one or two sentence summary of the presentation. Each registered speaker is allotted five minutes to speak behind the podium. If there are a significant number of registered speakers, this time will be due for each registered speaker. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful and civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. Personal insults, profanity, or language that is not appropriate to be aired live on television, and offensive comments based on protected status or class are prohibited. The Chair of the Board has the authority to keep order and impose reasonable restrictions and to limit the time if there are a large number of speakers. We have seven signed up for this evening, and six of those, I believe, are with the track. Chris, if you don't mind, I would like to move you after the others, because many of them were here prior to your arrival. I am going to limit the presentations tonight to four minutes rather than five, meaning we have a large number of people. So with that, the first registered speaker is Dennis Batliner. You'd give your name and address, please, and your remarks. Yeah, Dennis, we'll let these people leave before your time starts, so. Thanks again to all of you for attending tonight. Appreciate your service. Thanks, Dennis, please proceed.
Thank you. Dennis Batliner, 1000 Perry Drive, Overland Park. That was a pretty amazing story we just heard, and it tells us how important athletics are to all of us, or should be. I'm here again to speak about the decision by the college to cut the track and cross-country programs and eliminate the outdoor track. Those of us who have looked into and thought about the reasons and rationale given by the administration know that everything stated is illogical, untrue, and has been disproven. Those of us questioning the track decision realize early on that this is about much more than athletic programs. I recently learned that some of the administrators involved in the track decision have also been involved in making other arbitrary decisions. Those decisions affected JCCC faculty and the college's prerequisite educational standards. Though they are very different issues, all of those deeply affect the JCC community and our community. The manner in which these decisions were made should be unacceptable to all of us, and this should cause us to question the administration's integrity. These decisions can be reversed at any time. You, the Board of Trustees, have that power and that obligation to get the process to positive change started. Please begin immediately. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis. Next speaker is Skylar Stook.
Stooki.
Stooki, I'm sorry.
My name is Skylar Stooki, 13301 West 91st Street, Lennox, Kansas. I'll start out, I just graduated last year from Johnson County Community College with my associates, and I'm currently competing at Park University. And my story starts out as about two weeks before graduation in high school, I was contacted by the track and field coach here, no intentions on competing in track in college or anything like that. He gave me the opportunity to do what I love to do, and that was compete and throw shot on the discus on track team. He gave me the opportunity to get a scholarship and come to Johnson County Community College with no, with a scholarship to not pay tuition, so full ride scholarship for my education. I loved every minute here at Johnson County Community College, and when I heard that the board decided to cut the track and field program, it honestly shocked me, and I know I'm not the only person that has been, how am I going to say it, has been affected by this decision by the board, and people that are wanting to continue their education might not be able before that, and that's what scholarships are for. For me, I know it wouldn't have been a problem for money for me to go to college, but I know several athletes right now that, at my former high school, that want to come and compete for a college program, and staying at home, coming to Johnson County would be one of their fits to go. So I know you guys have the right and obligation, in my opinion, to bring the track and field program back and allow these students get their education paid for while competing and loving their athletics, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Skylar, appreciate it. Michaela Lisher?
Michaela Lisher, 876 East 1050, Lawrence, Kansas. I'm a current cross-country and track athlete here at Johnson County Community College, and I first started with walking in a week before I was going to graduate high school early, not having any expectation of being offered onto the team. When I walked in, I was surprised, and I was honored to be offered a full ride to come run cross-country and track here. Taking away this program is not just taking away a sports team, it's taking away family, it's taking away opportunity, and it's taking away a lifestyle for a lot of people. Running is not simply just something that we do because it's fun. I think anyone who is a runner knows that there's days it's not fun, but we do it because it is a life sport. It is something that we will forever hold dear to us, because it doesn't change us just as athletes, but as people. Both coaches and all of my teammates that I've had here at Johnson County have changed my life for the better. And I was expecting to come here and be able to attend four semesters and compete four semesters, but sadly, after my first semester, I was told that the program would be cut. And that would make me falling short of one semester of eligibility and one semester of scholarship that I was expecting to receive. I know you have the power to overturn this, and I really, really ask you to just reconsider because it means so much to so many people, to high school students, to college students, to alumni, to parents. It's something that we can't just let go. Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela.
Promise I'm not texting anyone, my stuff's on my phone.
You're young, you can read it on your phone.
Well, when it's all jumbled up and funny and technology doesn't work, you can't, but I can try to wing it if this won't cooperate here soon. Nick Cole, 12232 Connell Drive, Overland Park, Kansas, 66213. I'll get that out of the way while this loads here. And while this is loading, I'll go off the cuff a little bit. Appreciate the athletes and former athletes coming out. That story about Lisa was awesome, I think, which perfectly exemplifies why we're here. And there's something that I kind of want to lead off with, and that's four simple words: Johnson County Community College. So I want you all to think about what that means to you, and actually think about it for a second. So now think about the order of those words: Johnson County, Community, College. There's something that you should all notice, and that's the fact that community comes before college. You all know why we're here by now. You all know that we've been digging into this and organizing our efforts to keep the track and cross-country programs alive. And while we may be new to some of this, we are learning quickly. So for us, this did start out as, for the most part, being about the track and cross-country programs, but one of the things that we have learned is that it's about so much more than that. Some of the things have already been mentioned, but it's about faculty being unhappy with Some of the things have already been mentioned, but it's about faculty being unhappy with the administration at this school and the way that they go about some decisions that they've made. It's about how elected officials are spending taxpayer dollars. It's about the lack of transparency of information at this college. It's about student involvement. It's about community involvement. It's about community opportunity. And let's not forget, this is very important, it's about tradition. As Board members, one thing you must be careful about is affecting college traditions. These are things that you are supposed to uphold. And when this decision was recommended by the administration using misleading and non-transparent information, as we've all found out by now, this Board essentially rubber-stamped it, and that's not why you're here. You are not here to rubber-samp those decisions. In no way and under no circumstances should this be acceptable, regardless of how big or tradition-rich a program is, or not. But add in the fact that track and cross-country at this school were purpose-built for the sole reason of creating athletic tradition at this college, and now we've got an even bigger issue. There have been successful programs here, there have been a lot of them. This is one of them that's been around for over three decades, and it provides opportunity for around 60 kids every year. So to take that away, that should not sit well with any of you. It shouldn't sit well with any of us, and it doesn't. But we know, you have the power here. You do. We respect that you were elected to harness that power for the greater good of this college and our community. And notice, I finished that sentence with "community" because that's the most important thing, how you finish. Our ask today is simple, and the ask also of the 500 roughly people that were out on our track on Saturday is simple. Put in a motion to thoroughly review this decision. We are here to help. We've already done a lot of the work for you. We've done the digging, we've done the research. We can help you. We will continue to be a part of this discussion going forward, and sometimes it takes a set of outside eyes to see the bigger picture, to see the true impact of a decision. We are those outside eyes. Let us work with you to come up with an appropriate community solution, so that way we can continue providing opportunities for this community instead of taking them away. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Appreciate it. Blake Koger. Blake?
Yeah. Blake Koger, 24853 West 148th Court, Aletha, Kansas. Part of the Save JCCC Track effort, as you all know. So it can be painful to admit when we've made a bad decision, when we've supported the wrong decision or even made a simple mistake. Trust me, I hate being wrong just as much as the next person, but you have to recognize this decision, this decision-making trap that you've fallen into, and it's called the sunk-cost fallacy. I'm sure you've heard of it. It's what makes it hard for us to end something in which we've already put time, money, or effort into. And I imagine you all feel that way. You've supported this decision, you've probably expended a lot of political capital, the college's PR team has spent a lot of time and effort on advocating for the decision to cut the program. So I understand how you want to keep fighting for it until you feel you're successful or we go away. But I strongly recommend that you don't fall into this trap. I guarantee it's going to be far better for you to accept this now, rather than dragging it out and wasting even more time and resources, because we aren't going to stop. We're not. We're runners, we're not going to stop. So Warren Buffett probably put it best. He said, "When you find yourself in a hole, the best thing you can do is stop digging." The other trap you've fallen into is the confirmation bias. You all sat in these rooms, in these meetings, and only searched for and favored information that confirms your beliefs while simultaneously ignoring or devaluing information that contradicts your beliefs. I have serious doubts that you had anyone truly play devil's advocate or argue against the decision. I know Trustee Cross may have dissented, but to what degree? Did you evaluate any alternatives to cutting the program? Did you flesh out a variety of scenarios and calculations? I don't think you did. The core documents we've reviewed don't have much evidence of that, and that's your job as the Board, that's your elected duty as Board members. It's not just, you can't just be yes men and yes women. You have to have the fortitude. We had over 500 people show up on a cold, dreary Saturday with a list of 100 different things that they'd rather be doing that day, but they showed up. And I have to ask, where were you? Not a single one of the Board or the administrators came on Saturday. How was that acceptable? I realize this isn't your job, and you're not exactly compensated for this position, however, neither are we, and yet here we've been. I didn't ask for nor campaign for this position, as you did yours, but we take our responsibility very seriously. Unfortunately, your actions, or inactions, rather, are par for the course, and this is how you've responded for these three months that we've been on this and earlier on when Brian contacted the administration, with silence and apathy. Well, we're not going to be silent, and we're not going to be apathetic. We're committed to the long game, we're committed to continuing to involve the community, the faculty, the students, and other local officials. If needed, we'll influence every Board election until we get this program reinstated. We're that committed to this. So I implore you to bring forward a motion to discuss this as a Board, evaluate options, and work with us. Don't get caught up in these decision-making traps that you've been in up till now. I'll finish with some positivity. This is what the program could be and what it should be. If you would just take a moment and review what we've been trying to say for months, read and actually contemplate the emails that I'm sure you're getting and not exactly responding to, take a look at the media, the coverage, our website. If you take that time, you could see what this program could and should be. I wish you'd seen the energy on the track on Saturday. That was something else, because you could use that energy to not only reignite this program, but all of JCCC athletics. And if you, and you could, and, you can take that with the college's learning mission and efforts for community connections. If you'd stop to actually see what's happening here, you'd understand this is a tremendous opportunity, the type of opportunity that we haven't seen at this school. We want to work with you. If you work with us and our community, we can help you harness that, and we can create something great. Thank you.
Thanks, Blake. Katie Guyer?
I live at 14429 South Village Drive in Aletha. This is my daughter Haley. I brought her with me because I want you to see the face of the future here at Johnson County Community College per track. Haley runs cross-country, and she runs on the track team. She's run the last two years, and I can't, I can't say what she, what she's going to study when she goes to college. I do know she is going to be running in college. It has, it has given her determination, it has given her a family, a close-knit group of coaches and other runners that she has bonded with over these past two years, and I only want to see her go further in that. And I feel like if the program here at Johnson County Community College is cut, that kids like Haley, her teammates, those that, you know, might not have that opportunity to go to other schools, it's being taken away from them in the local area, those that do want to stay close to home and still be able to be active in sports and things like that. And so I just wanted you to see the face of the future here at Johnson County Community College per track and cross-country. Thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Thank you for coming. Our last registered speaker is Chris Rozell. Chris?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, members of the community, the faculty, the administration, students. My name's Chris Rozell. I'm a student here. I've been in classes all day at KU. They're having classes this week. Go figure. I've got eight points. I'm going to touch on very briefly tonight, because I don't want to keep on coming back and doing this. One is the student senate. Another is feedback to the administration. Another is leadership training here at the college. Another is the college honoring a sex abuser. Another is study locations at the college. Another is Chinese scholarships. Another is a suggestion of a center for innovation and a forum for ideas. Another is coordinating the break with KU. And last is feedback for continual improvement. Now with the senate, when I was on the senate, I was told that the senate is not allowed or is not supposed to make any resolution that is not pre-approved by the administration. Whether that's official policy or not, I don't know, but as a person who understands democracy, I found that strange. The administration told me to only go to one administration person to give feedback. So when I've gone to other administration people, occasionally I've been shunned, if you will, refused to be addressed and listened to. Leadership training at the college. I've taken in a lot of leadership. I took doctoral courses in management and leadership, so I know what is taught in great leadership training. At the college, I learned, I took leadership for a while, and I learned that it was pastoral leadership for everybody who's going to be a minister, but they're going to be student leaders supposedly, but we learned pastoral leadership at the college and no other form of leadership. I submit that's not really comprehensive leadership. I probably shouldn't dwell on how we honor an apparent sex abuser at the college and how that might be inappropriate nowadays. Everyone knows exactly what I'm talking about, right? The Carlson Center. Chinese scholarships. We have a great scholarship program with the Chinese, and we allow them to discriminate by age. So they discriminate against anyone older than 35 years of age. That is against law in the U.S., but we facilitate it here because they are giving the money. I submit it would be a great idea if there were a center for innovation and resources here at the college, so students with ideas could implement their ideas and try to pilot novel things. And also, if there were fora for discussions. I request, in the future, there are a lot of us who take courses, both here and at KU. And that I've got to go to a class at KU this week, but I have this week off here, but I go to, you get the picture. KU is off next week, Johnson County Community College is off this week. Last, I suggest increasing mechanisms for feedback from students, so situations like we're talking about right now don't reoccur. I've gone over my five minutes, or four minutes, so I won't reiterate what I've said, but if you have any questions, please follow up with me. I've got far more information than you would care to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We normally don't respond in the open forum on the issues, and Chris, in your particular case, we're not going to begin to refute what you have said in terms of your viewpoint versus another viewpoint, but I would encourage anybody that comes to the Board of Trustees with issues. We have staff at all levels that can deal with all of those issues, and that would be a good point to get the details and the communication straightened around.
This stuff is, I haven't done that.
We have, thank you. We have, back to the track issue, we have now spent a number of months in open forum hearing very similar testimony, and in many cases, new testimony. We're going to change our procedure a little bit tonight, in that as Chair, I'm going to make a statement. I'm going to ask Dr. Weber to make a statement, because as we have analyzed certain parts of information over time, there is a different understanding of that information, and I want the trustees to be able to hear some of that information. And then I will ask the trustees if they would like to make a comment regarding the track issue. I do have a prepared statement, but before I get to that, I want to say to the testimony of the track people tonight and the previous months, I really do appreciate your passion in how you feel about that, about the track and the involvement. I was a high school student from northern Minnesota and allowed to participate in high school and athletics at the basketball, football, and baseball level, and I had the opportunity to play college basketball at a four-year school. I actually started that experience at a community college in Colorado before transferring to a four-year school, and while serving as superintendent of schools, I represented west-central Missouri on the Missouri High School Activities Association. So at the K through 12 level, I'm a very strong proponent of students participating in extracurricular activities and what they can, what they can do in the total development of a young student, and an older student for that matter. So it's not a matter of taking sides about whether we support athletics. In regard to the comment, and I don't remember if it was Nick or Blake, regarding the, and by the way, I consider the open forum closed at this point, and the comments will be made as I've indicated, but I appreciate your reference to the tradition of the college and the future of the college. In fact, that's one of the underlying principles of why we've done what we've done. We're just 50 years old, we're a very young college, but in that tradition, and you mentioned community college, we'd like to think we're a comprehensive community college, and so we have a lot of programs to think about and consider as we think about the roughly 19,000 to 20,000 regular students, another 15,000, and overall, probably about 60,000 people that come across this campus for some activity or other during a year. But let me just share this. Thank you for your comments on this matter, and we appreciate your passion. The college's decision to discontinue the track and cross-country programs were not taken lightly and is a decision the Board of Trustees stands behind that was made by the administration as part of a budget priorities moving forward. Over a year and a half ago, the administration, as part of the facility's master plan, reviewed all programs, athletic and otherwise, and made reasonable recommendations about what was in the best interest to the overall student population and community with current revenues, tuitions, and fees, enrollment, and stakeholder needs. The decision also included an approval by the Board of the removal of the outdoor track facility as a part of the facility's master plan after two public meeting retreats and discussions at regularly scheduled board meetings. We acknowledge there are other schools of thought, but we are, as you have expressed, but we are confident the logic used here is what we stand behind in the greater interest of the current, and more so, the future student population in the community. A frustrating part of this process on our end is some misinformation that is circulating. I understand there is a local high school track coach that has expressed little communication and being surprised about the decision. President Sopich personally met with Dr. Bill Ford from St. Thomas Aquinas to alert him of the outdoor track facility going away. I believe that was held in December of 2016. Dr. Ford's request was to let him know in advance which college representatives communicated the decision to St. Thomas Aquinas and the plans for the space. Our facility's manager also met with the Athletic Director of St. Thomas in March of 2017. Also in the January board meeting, I suggested as Chair, the organizers whom were in attendance, some of you are here this evening, reach out to President Sopich and Dr. Weber, and they'd be happy to speak with them. As of today, we have yet to have them reach out to have such a discussion. Support for athletics has been an ongoing issue, as the cost of scholarships, travel, and equipment has increased over the years. The timing of JCC's decision was triggered as a result of the college's facility master plan strategy and the Kansas Jayhawk Community Colleges Conference' recent bylaw changes increasing scholarship allowances. There are three main points to understand as it relates to rationale behind the discontinuation of the track and cross-country teams at JCCC. First is Student Activity Fund and Student Fee. First is student activity fund and student fees. JCCC has made a conscious decision not to increase fees on our students. About eighty percent of our athletes are on books and tuition scholarship. These scholarship funds come from the student activities fee, which is collected from every student who attends JCCC. Forty-five percent of the total discretionary dollar amount goes to support athletics. Simply adding to pulling from the college's general fund, which some have suggested, is not an option to assist in maintaining the programs. It is time for us to align our resources with our commitment to student success for additional student populations. Number two, stakeholder involvement. Key stakeholders in the Johnson County Community College Athletic Department, staff and community partners directly affected by the decision, including St. Thomas Aquinas, were consulted about the situation starting back in March of 2017. Three, comprehensive community college. As a comprehensive community college, we have to weigh all options that are in the best interest of our students and community. JCC, seven remaining athletic teams after the reduction of the track program included. While it is unfortunate and something you never want to do is discontinue a program, whether it be athletic, academic, or a club organization, decisions must be made. The college wants to ensure a systematic approach to all it does in the greater interest of all students and community members. JCCC still has a high number of athletic teams when comparing to other urban, suburban community colleges and peers in the league of innovation. As part of the facility's master plan, we are going to build an athletic complex that includes a new softball field, a new soccer field, restrooms, a concession stand, parking, and will be ADA compliant. Such an investment represents a serious commitment to our athletic teams and community. The elimination of the outdoor track makes this possible from a space need and program funding need, as that is a very large footprint on the very front door of our college. By reducing the pressure of the student activities fees, we will be able to better support our seven remaining sports teams and all student opportunities, athletic or not. We will also be able to invest students' fee contributions to a larger subset of the student population. By doing so, we anticipate improved student outcomes. The bottom line is we have to be careful about what we can do, and we can't do everything. We're doing an awful lot as it is. The decision made over a year ago enables us to better serve our remaining sports teams and serve our community by making available a campus for their use. It is important for us to be able to utilize student fee money in support of all clubs and organizations appropriately, as well as fund future student success and completion initiatives. The college will be moving forward with the plans to remove the outdoor track facility in accordance with the facility's master plan, and the administration has our support on this matter. And with that, I would ask Dr. Weber to make a few remarks representing the administration.
Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to do so, and I apologize a little bit in advance. There's probably going to be some redundancy, but I think the best way to go about this is probably going to speak to the process by which we went through as well as then the communications that were had, and so some of what I will say will be repetitive of what you said, but it'll speak to the process when it occurred, the communication as it occurred. And so conversations began in the spring of about 2015 around the impact of the athletic department on the student fees budget overall. It was identified at that time that something would eventually need to be done. Simultaneously, there were conversations with athletic department personnel about challenges faced with existing operating budgets, and so those are things that they were talking around, feeding teams when traveling, recruiting, equipment costs, and things in our operating budget that have not been addressed for a number of years in each of their teams. So then during the facility's master plan process, it was determined that co-locating athletic venues with frequent event dates would benefit the college from both an administrative standpoint, where we have game day administration issues with multiple events occurring, athletic training, facility support, as well as spectator experience, where we could put in permanent restrooms, concessions, and some gate area things. So that was a decision to look to co-locate some of the fields that we have more regular spectator sports. And critical, excuse me, a critical recognition of the facility's master plan was that similar to a performing arts series, the college's athletic facilities support a wide range of community needs. Co-located soccer, softball, and baseball with multiple purpose usages on these fields would address our ability to serve the community. We get a lot of field rentals for purposes other than maybe the direct sport that uses them, and so we see some synergy there. Additionally, the facility's master plan initially included moving the track to where the softball field currently is, which would have supported both track and cross-country conversations at that time. But as the facility master plan estimates were learned, along with the Jayhawk Conference discussions around scholarship allowances, the administration determined that it was time to discuss an overall commitment to athletics as part of the college's mission. There were essentially three options that were made available to us. The first being continue to fund the programs as we have been, and that would mean that we would not provide requested support by the coaches. We'd also be losing ground by not providing fee scholarships that will be provided to other K, JCCC schools, and we repeatedly hear from the coaches a difficulty of continued competition in the arms race that Kansas Athletics is. Our second option was to invest more. We could have invested, in addition to the five-plus million that is already in the RFP for the facility's master plan athletics portion, we could have added over one-point-five million. We just had estimates at that time for what the track replacement would have been, and conservatively around two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to meet the requests of the coaches. We anticipate that would have been about a hundred-and-fifty thousand for fees, from fees for scholarship and travel, as well as a hundred thousand dollars for general fund requests that they had been asking for for a number of years. The third option we were presented with, really after research, was to discontinue a program and reallocate the resources committed to it. This is a choice that was decided upon, and track cross-country made the most sense when considering facility, Title IX, and scholarship implications moving forward. So that was the process that we went through to get to the decision. Along the lines of communications, we kind of followed these channels. When it became evident to administration that we were faced with the issue of our overall commitment to athletics, both the former athletic director, Carl Heinrich, and I had conversations with athletic personnel about their preferences around continuing with current level of support and same amount of programs. At that time, we told them the college was not going to look to invest more, that decision had been made, so continuing with the same level of support and the same programs, or addressing our overall number of programs to reallocate existing resources among remaining teams. It was the preference of the department to address the amounts of programs we fielded. The consensus was that the decision was necessary in order to maintain a competitive edge. So non-academic program addition or elimination decisions are not typically voted on by the board, since the decision to discontinue track and cross-country was delayed for a year in the best interest of student athletes at that time. What we had done was we made the decision with a year-plus notice, so that way current freshmen would be, have the opportunity to exhaust their eligibility, and that would be a traditional freshman. We heard from one today, apparently maybe she came this semester, and then it would allow those who had signed letters of intent for the following year to decide whether they wanted to come for a year or to go to another school where they could compete for longer. So that decision was made with that kind of advanced notice for that reason. But then administration determined it was the right decision to notify the board of our plans last spring. Communication was made to the board in early March through email, through the Learning Quality Committee, and through the March 2017 Board of Trustees meetings. Other community partners with direct interest in the track facility were made aware last spring. The decision was made to allow current student athletes opportunity to exhaust their eligibility. The biggest discouragement to date has been the ongoing miscommunications about both the decision and the process. For example, there seems to be an impression that the decision was sprung on St. Thomas Aquinas, who has used our facilities as high school partners for years, when it actually was requested by their administration that we give a year's notice if we were going to make a decision such as this, and we honored that request. There's an impression that we are unique in making this type of decision, when in fact, urban and suburban community colleges across the country are faced with very similar circumstances as they've looked at their overall investments in extracurricular activities, with special interest in athletics due to the contribution per athlete. I guess most specific to this example would be Maricopa, who's another of our league peer institutions. They have ten colleges in their district. It's also the district that the group opposing the decision has used as their example model, but just last month, they made the decision to cut all four of the football teams within their district because of their budgetary constraints. I do hope that this better explains a little bit the process that occurred to arrive at our decision and how we worked to communicate it to others.
Thank you, Dr. Weber. At this point, I would ask if any trustees would like to make a comment. Trustee Musil?
As Chairman Cook said, we don't always respond in these, but I think you that have come and those that are watching on TV and those that came to the track, I drove by on Saturday, I did not get out to participate because it would have been seen as an ally, and I think my job up here is to listen to all sides and be objective as I make that decision. But the energy that's been shown is what I would expect. The energy and passion from a group of athletes who are close-knit, whether they ran together or threw together on the same team or ten years apart. I gave a little bit of my history in January, but this has been portrayed as anti-track or anti-athlete, and it certainly isn't from this trustee, and I don't think it is from any trustee. My sister went to college on a track, basketball, and volleyball scholarship to Cloud County Community College. She played two years there before going on to Emporia State on a scholarship. She was sixth in the nation in the javelin her sophomore year at Cloud County Community College. My niece and my nephew both came to this college and ran track and cross-country in the early 2000s. They had a great experience. It bettered them as people. There's nobody up here denying that. I mentioned in January, what I didn't know at the time was that their scholarships were being paid for the other students on campus through student fees. So I appreciate the fact that people come here on scholarship and get a chance to go to school without paying tuition and have athletic scholarships, but those scholarships are paid for other students, and I think we have to take that into consideration as board members. I'm trying to make a list of notes here. You know, there's been a suggestion that there's a lack of integrity. Most of the emails that I've received have been overwhelmingly polite, courteous, and very strong and civil advocates for the position, but there's been this sense that there's something greedy going on here, that somehow a few administrators are, have some cash interest in this. Nobody has any, there's no greed going on here, there's no politics or money going on here, so when I hear that, it troubles me, because one of the things that I think everybody up here tries to do is look at all sides of an issue. And Blake, when you were up here, you know, the fallacy of sunk costs? I can turn that around and use that on the fallacy of keeping a track because we've sunk so much into it. So we ought to keep that tradition. I don't, I believe in looking at it on all the other grounds. This is a judgment on priorities. There's some cellphone company that talks about the speed of your data may be prioritized behind other, so they're going to prioritize you behind somebody else. It's a very clever way of saying you're going to be slowed down. What we have to do up here is make priorities, not just for track or debate or cross-country or culinary or the English department, but for everybody in the county. And so when somebody attacks the integrity of the board or attacks the integrity, attacks the integrity of the administration, I demand more of them than a disagreement on the outcome. And what I've heard mostly in this debate has been a disagreement on the outcome. The suggestion that there have been lies and untruths and falsehoods, I don't think have been demonstrated. I can get into, I could go through the financial stuff and say four-hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand dollars of operating money for fifty athletes or sixty athletes, eight or nine thousand apiece, I could make the argument that's worth it on the benefit, or I could make the argument that that's too much because we don't spend that much on other students. I could argue about what it costs to put the track in and that it needs two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of renovation. I sympathize with St. Thomas Aquinas, but the community college job is not to provide a track for another entity and have them pay sixty-nine-hundred dollars a year on a one-point-five to two-million-dollar facility. I served eight years on the Overland Park City Council, and I've been here now six years. The hardest thing to do on any program, existing or proposed, is to say no, because it's easy to say yes. Anybody that thinks the board is up here saying, oh, yeah, we're gung-ho on cutting track, is crazy. Nobody likes it, we're all uncomfortable up here, we don't like, you know, disappointing people who have a direct stakeholder interest in a program. So saying no is hard. We could raise the mill levy a point, two, point-one mills and raise enough to fund all our athletics departments, and that would be a raise point-one on a mill levy of nine something. And everybody in the county would pay more on their property taxes. We can afford almost anything in this county to the point where somebody, the voters, the taxpayers, the businesses that pay the taxes say that's too much. I'm disappointed that we compare this to the facility's master plan, and we hear things like we care more about buildings than we do about people. The career tech ed building and the graphic design building, fine arts building, are going to serve hundreds and hundreds and thousands of students over the next forty years, and the ones that go through HVAC or auto tech or electrical or graphic design are going to serve this county, and they're going to be able to get jobs through that. And that's going to be an important part of this college. The rest of the facility master plan is designed to do the same thing. I don't think the administration would stand here and think that this board is a rubber stamp, because we've asked questions and we've changed policies, and five years ago, when the administration said we want to raise the mill levy by a mill, I opposed it, and the board ended up disagreeing with them and raising it by three-quarters of a mill because we didn't think we should just raise the mill levy and spend the money when we, unless we were proving we were being the most efficient. I have read every email that I've received, and I will respond to them with a lot of the things I've said today. I'm not as interested in what the media says. I did, well, I did watch the media reports, you had Channel 41 out there, you had Channel Five out there, great reporting of people that had an interest in track. I guess the last thing I'll say is, our last speaker talked about opportunities being taken away. Dr. Weber spoke about it. We're not unique, and what I learned in January when you all came up here and spoke is that we're the only, we're the only community college in the metro area that still has track and field across country. I can read that as we ought to keep it, or I can read that as that we're behind the curve, and others have decided that their priority and their focus, both in athletics and in academics, ought to be to spend those resources somewhere else. So I guess I don't think anybody thinks this decision was made easily. I will concede that you guys have brought more information to us, you've allowed us to look into it with more factual information. I now know the operating budget of the track, I now know the capital costs, I now know the scholarship costs, I now know what we do with St. Thomas Aquinas, but none of that has suggested to me that the decision we made in 2017, 2016 on the facility's master plan, that was made in open meetings with open documents and open discussion, was anything but the right, difficult decision.
Thank you, Trustee Musil. Others? Trustee Snyder?
Trustee Musil spoke about a lot of things that I would have noted, so I won't get into that, and Dr. Cook, I appreciated your statement, I agree wholeheartedly with everything you wrote, would just note, and I hesitate to note, but in the issue of transparency, you had a lot of "we's" in there, and we hadn't really discussed this. I agree completely with it, but didn't want the notion out there that somehow we had all talked about that letter before today.
I think that reference, Trustee Snyder, really was to the previous board when we had these discussions.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah. Go ahead, please.
Nope, that...
Okay. Others? Trustee Ingram?
Well, I would just say that I'm sorry that Trustee Lindstrom and Trustee Cross are not here this evening too, because I think that they, you know, we've got two new trustees on the board who weren't around to hear those conversations, and that kind of puts you in a precarious position, which I don't feel like is right, because the decision was made by that previous board, but you covered a lot of territory. I think the easiest thing for me to share is we did feel like we had great information that was brought to us, we made the decision that we made at the time, and, you know, your emails have been appreciated, much like Trustee Musil, I have read them all, I have responded, I believe, to all of them in some fashion, and we have passed them on to administration. So we're all very, very aware of the difficulty of continuing to move forward with this, and like Trustee Musil said, this is tough for us to do too, but we made the decision and we stand by it, so.
Trustee Lawson, comment?
Not much more to add to what's been discussed already, and I appreciate what you said as well, and this is difficult, you know, since this was a decision made before us. I really look at the Johnson County residents receiving their property tax assessments right now and seeing that increase, so I know many of us have really looked into it, I've read all the emails, I followed along with a lot of things, I really wanted to understand what's going on, and I appreciate the democracy of coming out and really letting us know how you feel, because that's what this is, and being able, and I'm so grateful for the administration for providing so much information. And being able, and I'm so grateful for the administration for providing so much information to us and making so many meetings as well. I know when I look across this county, a lot of city council, commissioner, school boards, we're faced with the same situation of finding ways to help ease the cost of, you know, what we provide for the residents, whether it's more direct benefits with tuition relief or reduction of property mill levy. So, these are decisions that we have to kind of sit and look at as we increase this appraisal value that we've experienced. While we can debate how much we should work to provide, to give back to the community, I look at the open programs like the track where few students use its services and it makes it difficult to work towards some form of relief for the community, whether that's the property tax relief or tuition relief. It's hard for me to punish thousands of, you know, Johnson County residents' pocketbooks in that way.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the comments from the trustees and I will, I guess, wrap this up by saying that it is our intent to discontinue the track program this spring. The track will be demolished, we will be using that space for the projects that we have discussed and we certainly appreciate, and while you're, it's, you're not pleasing to, to hear that, answer the passion that you had for the program and the support that you give to the people. I think this whole idea of the team, when you participate on a team, that Trustee Musil referred to, is inherent in a club, a group, an athletic team, and for those of us that have had the privilege of, of participating on an athletic team certainly understand that. So, with that, I appreciate your comments, trustees, and we will move ahead with the facilities master plan as we have agreed to. With that, I would like to call Ms. Bukaima to the podium for the Student Senate report.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk, to talk with you on behalf of Student Senate. I wanted to share with you Student Senate budget requests, club requests and update on initiatives. These are 2017, 2018, Student Senate has a budget of $38,000 that we allocate to clubs and organizations on campus to help them with their events. The total request that we have so far is the $21,980. Most of these clubs are from, they are attached to...
Where does this money come from?
I'm sorry?
Where does the money come from?
The money?
Money.
The money?
Yeah.
The money come from the fees that all students pay. And it's just one part of, it's not all the fees that the students pay. So, as you can see, we have kind of recurrent budget requests from these clubs because, because they are attached to programs or other classes like Model UN. The, the maximum that a club can request is $8,000 and it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be representing more than 70% of the cost of the event. Some upcoming budget requests, Veterans Club, Hospitality Management Club for their, for restaurant show and Active Minds with a guest speaker. This is just a quick kind of comparison between 2015, 2016 and last year. We're kind of similar and compared to 2017, 2018, there is less budget requests. It's one of the reasons we kind of working on increasing student involvement on campus. This is one of the data that we have. For the club requests, this is only 2018 club request, not included fall ones. We have the Table Tennis Club, eSports, which is a video game competition, and the real statement of the student leaders in medicine. An update on initiative, I would like to thank the faculty representatives and the jeans for their time and their contribution to both initiatives, the academic seats and Student Senate and increasing student involvement through the academic branch. I think we had some positive discussions and we are trying to see what the next steps are. Regarding increasing Student Senate visibility, we are working on a new logo and we have to increase the Student Senate visibility with the upcoming elections for the Executive Board and the returning senators. Reforming Inter Club Council, we are working on a survey for the club leaders to see what they need and maybe the new platform coming up this fall will also help identify what the mission for Inter Club Council is. Last but not least, Student Healthcare Student Center, we are still trying to research what other higher education institutions have for their students. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Thank you. I stay, stay at the podium for a minute. Dr. Weber, I'm going to put you on the spot and I apologize for that. But, we, you know, I guess as I listened to the open forum tonight and in your comments about, we need to be sensitive to all of our clubs and all of our organizations and how we support them. Your very first slide was, was, the very first two slides were very impressive in terms of the clubs and as I look at that, I know that Model UN, year in, year out, is one example, is outstanding, not to take away anything from the other clubs or units. But, but I appreciated your remarks saying that those student fees and your question of where these budgets come from, that as we look at all of our programs, we have to be sensitive about all of our needs and not just a program. A second comment at open forum was that I got the sense that our Student Senate is kind of handicapped or held back by what they can do or say because of the administration. Seems to me you have a lot of initiatives and you just complimented your advisor for the support. It seems to me that we have a lot of activity, so I guess, Dr. Weber, I'd like you to respond to what I've just said in both of those regards, if you could, please.
I'll do my best. Since you put me on the spot. I, I, I think, I think she did a terrific job and thank you very much, great job of demonstrating the, the comprehensive nature of what Johnson County Community College is. We have a lot of students who are engaged in their college experience in a multitude of ways. And we want to continue to support those. We know that students who are engaged in their college experience inside and outside of the classroom are more successful. Part of the challenge that we face is that each of these clubs and orgs that are supported and, and, and are, go to the Student Senate for, for requests, like today's examples, are programs that are run on pretty sure string budgets, but in order for them to compete at their level, it, it, that works. Whereas the challenge we run into a little bit with athletics is, it's, it's a completely different arms race to, to, to support athletics programs. And so, what we are excited about is our ability to continue to do things like this, support more students, get more students engaged in, in the, in the programs that Student Senate supports, so we can continue to see future results in more clubs and groups and, and students from, from different backgrounds and populations trying to get involved in their college experience.
Thank you.
Randy, what's a, what does a cost for a student, tuition and books for one year?
Well, it depends on how many credit hours they take, but approximately about $5,000.
Five, for one year?
Yeah.
And you can see, for one scholarship, for one track person, the entire club is getting a fraction of that. So, that's what we're talking about when we talk about these student activities fees and how to best use them.
A great detailed report, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the trustees?
I think it's the first PowerPoint from Student Senate, I like it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Give us a better grip on this.
I didn't see a PowerPoint club on the...
Good. I, I have to ask you, did you run that by me before that went up? Did you?
No, I did not.
You did not come into my office and show me that?
No.
Okay.
I did have a chance to attend last month's Student Senate meeting and that was really phenomenal, I really enjoyed it. It was nice to be in the audience and see it was so professionally managed and well-done and it was really nice. And you gave a lot of new clubs opportunities on the campus as well as debated financial ability to support other clubs and that was really eye-opening. That was something I didn't know that you guys were doing to really help clubs grow bigger and show what they can do and so I'm really grateful for what you're doing.
Thank you, we highly appreciate you coming to our agenda, simply.
Thank you very much, appreciate it, thanks for your good work. Have a great spring. College lobbyist report, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This may represent the first time in my 10 years of representing the college before the state legislature, the first time that I've ever given a legislative update in real time. As we speak right now, the legislature, actually they've been engaged in debate over the gun bill before the meeting started and presently they're on an amendment dealing with local control for campus carry. And so, I'll be kind of watching over here on my Twitter feed to see exactly what's going on while I'm giving my report, so we'll see how this goes. Again, it's, it's great to be able to report to you that the revenues continue to flow into the state's coffers. The month ending, the short month, February ending, February 28th brought 24 million more than was expected. That brings the fiscal year-to-date overage for the state budget right now at about 270 million. I think most of the people that are close to the process are fairly confident that if things continue the way they're going, and there's no reason to believe at this point that, that the revenues should, shouldn't continue to come into the, to the Department of Revenue, that, that everything is on track to make the $590 million figure that is necessary to meet budget expectations. That's four months to go to get to $590 million of, of new dollars raised for the state of Kansas. As it relates to budgets, last month I introduced the topic to this, to my report anyhow, it may not have been a, a new topic to those of you sitting around the board table, that of the dark store theory. And that is a conversation that has continued to, to go on in Topeka, mainly only in the Senate Tax Committee. And there have been some informational hearings on the topic, on both sides of the issue. There is no bill, there continues to be no bill and I don't believe that we'll see legislation related to dark store theory this session. We're, we're getting close to the end of, of the regular part of the session where the legislature takes a break, goes home, we come back for the veto session. I've learned never to say never in this process, but at the same time, there are a lot of moving parts and pieces that still need to occur at the Board of Tax Appeal level, lots of cases pending and I think we'll see even some court action before we maybe see legislation. Nonetheless, I think it's important that we continue to, to watch what is happening with that conversation because it does have potential for significant impact on local governing boards throughout the state of Kansas. With respect to higher education budgets, there has been some movement there. Just this week, the Senate Ways and Means Budget Subcommittee on Higher Education included in their budget recommendations a 75% restoration of the budget cuts that were made in fiscal year 2017. I wouldn't spend that money just yet because I have a feeling that Senate leadership will probably work to remove that recommendation when the full committee works the bill next week. And you may recall that last month I talked a little bit about how the House Appropriations Chair had requested some solutions or some options for potential or partial restoration of the budget. To, to date, the House Committee has not included any restoration numbers for higher education in their budget and so right now that still is at the governor's recommended levels that, that came out in the, in the governor's budget recommendations shortly after the State of the State speech. Both of those committees will be working with the full committee next week and in the, in the following week to develop their final budget proposals before going home, that's at least their goal. Things don't always work according to plan in Topeka, I know that comes as a shocker to you, but that is at least what, what we're being told as of today. Interestingly, also occurring today in Pittsburgh where the Board of Regents is meeting on the, on the campus at Pittsburgh State University, is a resolution that the board passed and we'll see how this plays out. The, let me just read the, the main statement of the res, the resolution. "The Board's policy resolution states that any prospective education investment by the legislature that includes the Kansas K-12 system of public schools must also include the state's public technical colleges, community colleges and universities. Kansas Board of Regents only supports new funding that is aligned with this policy resolution." That's a pretty bold statement and it certainly speaks of the support for higher education. You're also dealing with a, a body that, that hasn't depreciated the court telling it how to, to fund certain educational institutions, so we'll see how things play out there. The Board's number one priority continues to be the full restoration of, of budgets that were cut in fiscal year 2017. It's almost like we're getting ready to start over again because the legislature will receive this evening the, the study findings of the K-12 study that they contracted for. Dr. Taylor out of Texas A&amp;M will have submitted that, those findings. I, I don't know what, I haven't even heard inklings of what might be in the study. I think that anytime you, you contract a study, you can probably guess what it might say based on what you want it to say. Tomorrow at 1:00, the Joint Education Finance Committees will meet to hear from their contracted attorneys, both in the House and the Senate, to give them an update on just exactly what the, what the funding study says on K-12 education. And so, that conversation begins in earnest now. I do think we'll see those committees start to put together the framework of what that looks like, even, even though it's a little bit in advance of the, of the, the deadline date for not only the consensus revenue estimates, but we have to have all of this into the court, so the bill has to be passed, signed by the governor and over to the court by April 30th. We'll, we'll start to see some, some movement now on, on those pieces. Moving on a little bit, bless you, moving on a little bit to more of an academic discussion, there have been conversations back in the fall with Task Force on concurrent enrollment, I've talked a little bit about that. We had a, a presentation, a couple of presentations so far this spring on concurrent enrollment. The most recent one was, was last week where Dr. Flanders was scheduled to present to the Senate Education Committee on what the, the formal proposal looks like as it, as it deals with concurrent enrollment. In a nutshell, the recommendation that came from the Task Force would establish five core courses for delivery, standardized eligibility requirements for students, a common rate for tuition and fees, and identification for alternative delivery methods. Those five courses, I, I don't think come as a surprise, they've been discussed, it's American History I, Introduction to Psychology, Public Speaking, College Algebra and English Composition I. Given the, the way the, and the timing of the rollout of the proposal, it was, it's been proposed that the first year be a pilot project and that only English Composition I be treated as, as the pilot for, for the purposes of concurrent enrollment. We're still a long ways away from, from the finish line on this. I don't know that anybody knows how this will actually play out. I do believe that next week we'll be talking about what the, the funding mechanism looks like and chances are likely that one of the bills that I talked about early on in the, in the session, I think it's Senate Bill 217, I think it's in the report here, will likely be the area where that funding or that proviso, the proviso language is included on concurrent enrollment. There's already a, a component in there that talks about career and technical education and some funding streams and so that's likely where we'll see that discussion play out. Let's see if we have any updates right now. Well, they're voting on, they're voting on, there's a roll call vote on the campus carry repeal, so maybe before I'm done, we might have an answer on exactly where, where things are at. With respect to the gun bill, there were eight amendments offered this afternoon ranging on issues across the board, but, but the last one that is being offered right now is the local control issue as it relates to, to campus carry. The reason we're at that point is because early on, Senate leadership indicated that they did not plan to have that bill worked in committee. The bill did get worked in the Senate Federal and State Affairs Committee where all of the amendments that were made in the House were stripped out of the bill. The bill came to the Senate floor as though it were introduced in, in the House originally. And so, that's, that's the need for the extensive discussion on amendments this afternoon and, and still no, still no update yet. The, it failed 19 to 21, that's the, that's the number that just came across the, across the internet and so that, that's the one on local control for campus carry. So, that bill continues to... So that bill continues to be clean, meaning there are no amendments that were placed on the bill, and it simply deals with reciprocity with other states for concealed carry. Senate Bill 340 is another bill that I talked about last month that dealt with campus free speech. We didn't know a lot about it then. We still don't necessarily know a lot about it. And I suppose in the end, it's not particularly, it's okay because just this afternoon, prior to the debate that's going on right now, the Senate defeated that particular bill with arguments on both sides of the issue, 20 to 20. And it requires 21 votes to pass the Senate. And so that particular bill will not be dealt with at this point anyhow. I, I think there's still some questions on where that bill came from and just exactly what it did. Most campuses and the Board of Regents all have policies on, on free speech. And, and we'll see if there's any, any additional movement there, but for now, it's, it's, it's considered dead. And then the final bill that I just wanted to touch base on because I did report on it at the, at the last meeting is the one that dealt with the, the tuition for, in-state tuition for undocumented students. That bill is also considered dead for the session. And so we, we likely will not be hearing anymore about that particular issue as we move forward. So I think that, that the good news is budget discussions are moving forward and will continue to do so over the course of the next week. We seem to be in a fairly good position from a higher education standpoint related to the budgets. And, and everything starts over now with the, with the K-12 finance study that, that will be unveiled tomorrow.
Mr. Carter, thank you. Both trustees Lawson and Musial in their remarks regarding, comments regarding the track referenced, referenced the taxing challenges in Johnson County from a personal property standpoint, either ability to increase or the increased assessed values. My question is, and before I say the question, at our Rotary Club on Monday, our county appraiser gave an update on appraisals in Johnson County. And in the northeast part of the county, appraisals were in double-digit increases and some as much as 30%. But, but the thing that kind of jumped out, I think, at a number of us was that the proportion of property tax supporting county government, schools, library, et cetera, is, is now at about 64% of the total. And if the dark house, I mean residential, residential, I'm sorry, thank you. And the dark house, the dark store theory, if, if that came to play, would increase that number even higher. And so it seems to me, and trustee Lawson mentioned this, that if we get to 70 or 75% residential tax, the citizens will, will eventually say, hey, wait a minute, enough's enough. My question is this, I'm assuming the, as relates to Topeka, the dark store theory is probably a point of interest in Sedgwick, Shawnee, Douglas, Wyandotte, and Johnson Counties. Having said that, is there, is there any apathy in the rest of the state? What's your sense of what, what power those five counties will have to deal with that issue, positive or negative?
Yes, certainly I think the issue's being watched across the state. Certain, larger communities that have the large box stores certainly are impacted by the conversation related to dark store theory. But it plays out across the state elsewhere. Most, most counties still have some form of strip mall or a grocery store, you know, several throughout a county, even in a smaller county out in, out in the outer parts of Kansas. You also have to take into account the ag, ag valuations that play into the picture in those communities. And so it is, it is a conversation that, that many people are, are paying close attention to. I just think it's important to, to reiterate that while the issue isn't ripe yet, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't continue to pay attention to the, to exactly what's going on and what those impacts look like. I do think that you will see the ability of, of the larger communities to, to have a strong voice in this conversation.
Trustees, any questions? Trustee Snyder.
Dick, what, what would be our position on the concurrent enrollment issue? I mean, if it were to move forward as we understand it to move forward?
I'll allow, I think, I think Dr. Sobchak would be a great person to answer that.
I was expecting you to have an answer for that one. You know, the concurrent is an interesting, is an interesting topic. Across the country, states are offering, and communities are offering free community college. I think if you look at the state of Tennessee, and it'll be interesting to see the, the effects that has on their local economy as they try to close the gap, something that we've talked about often in Kansas. One of the vehicles to do that is by offering free community college to help close that gap. They, they, every state's different. They approached it, or the catalyst was major philanthropy behind that. And they, and it's not just free. I mean, those students have certain guidelines and requirements they have to, to maintain in order to be able to capitalize on that. So in a way, what we're trying to do in Kansas through concurrent, the belief is that if a student gets a free college class, they have a better likelihood of going on to college. That's the thinking behind this. Now, how you get 19 community colleges and six technical colleges and the number of universities that are all doing it a different way is, is a challenge. And that's what's been going on over the past year. As far as our position is, we're supportive of that. We're supportive, we're supportive of open, of access. We're supportive of giving people opportunity. So that's where we've stood. We've tried to, and we've worked. We've worked with the Board of Regents. Our position is different than the other community colleges across the state for a variety of different reasons. That's not unusual. That's oftentimes we find ourselves in a role that we're 1 versus 18. Because in this case, we think we can try to find a solution and work toward a better, toward a better objective, achieve the goal versus just being an obstacle to trying to make this happen. So that's where we are with that.
So if, on the Senate Education Committee, if Senator Sykes or Boyer asked, are you okay with this or not, what, what would our, or Senator Denny on Ways and Means?
Absolutely. Both, both of those senators would have an issue with this, with this proposal because the funding will come from K through 12. Through K through 12 funding, that's how this would happen. That's how community colleges would be reimbursed. And I think right now, K through 12 funding is kind of an unknown. So that makes this whole project and this initiative somewhat tenuous.
Okay, I'll follow later. And then, Dick, so other question, are there other priorities that we have? I, I know we're trying to watch or stop certain, we, there are things we wouldn't want to move forward, but is there anything we're actively trying to push besides budget issues? I'm not aware of any. I just wanted to.
I'm not aware of any that are out there right now. We, we, we kind of go along our guidelines of the statements of principle that, that we adopted. Well, they were read several times. I, I don't know if there was a formal adoption that speak to the things that, that the college can easily get behind or, or follow. I don't have, I don't have them immediately in front of me, but certainly the budget issue is going to be one of the top priorities for us this year and, and the restoration of the cuts.
Exactly. We're totally for the restoration of cuts. I think everybody is for restoration of cuts.
And then you don't need to respond, but I know if I were in your position, I, I would want to be in Topeka while the Senate was in session dealing with issues that were important to the college.
Yeah, and, and that's one of the things that Dick does. I mean, he, that's why he's up there.
No, I meant, like, as opposed to being here while they're over there dealing with campus carry type issues.
Yeah, it's, 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 there's some significant issues up, up there in the Capitol this time.
So from my perspective, you should have the leeway to be where you're best utilized.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Dick. Appreciate it very much. And drive safely back to Topeka when the Senate's still voting. Committee reports and recommendations. The first one is the Audit Committee. On pages one through four, you have that information. We gave that report at our February Board meeting, but we include those minutes in there for your reference. Those are the minutes of the meeting. Collegial Steering, I'm going to refer to trustee Ingram for that report as I was not present.
Yeah, we missed you. Collegial Steering met on Tuesday, March 6th. The only item on the agenda was a continuation of the discussion of academic freedom from the previous meeting that we had in February. As Dr. McLeod had held two town hall meetings for staff the previous week, I asked him to provide an update to the committee and help lead the discussion. Although the two town halls did not have a large audience, the PowerPoint and explanation of how the college began the process of creating the Statement of Academic Freedom was reviewed. History of the 1940 Statement of Principles on Academic Freedom was given, and a copy of the college's Statement on Academic Freedom was also shared among the participants. A question and answer opportunity was provided at each town hall. The Collegial Steering Committee members discussed further the status of our statement, and the question of where does it go from here will be discussed and determined by administration and faculty leadership. Discussion continued with a new topic that was also shared by Dr. McLeod regarding open education resource and electronic books. Dr. McLeod has begun to research options for the college to utilize electronic books. In order to keep the cost of textbooks down, some faculty have begun the process of not using textbooks where it is applicable to do so. With rising textbooks fees, faculty are keenly aware of the cost to the students and being more cost-effective when there is the opportunity to do so. Those present will look forward to continuing this discussion and how it affects the college when we meet on Tuesday, April the 3rd, 4:00 p.m. I would ask Dr. McLeod if he has anything to add to that report.
No, I think that you gave a pretty concise statement there. Really, the bookstore folks deserve a lot of credit for the work that has gone into open educational resources and first-day access with digital books. That work really was carried out primarily by our bookstore staff. And I want to make sure those folks get the credit for the work that they do because they carry the weight.
Thank you. Thanks.
That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Human Resources, trustee Lawson.
I apologize for this very long report, but it will go over a lot of recommendations. As you see within the board packets, I don't want to go over the minutes, but if this is a nice summary, even though it's four pages long, I will go as quickly as I can. Mr. Jerry Zimmerman reviewed the benefits recommendations for the 2018-2019 Plan. Details of those recommendations are on page five through 11 in the board packet. Overall, the college has experienced good performance in the medical plan over the last year after negotiations by Holmes and Murphy. The aggregated increase for the Johnson County Community College medical premiums will be at 4.8%. The premium increase percentage on these plans offered will vary slightly based on the actual cost increase to the specific plans. The committee reviewed and it is prepared to make recommendations on the approval of seven, or several, 2018-2019 benefit plan and contract renewals, which I will provide in a brief summary of each renewal. And then I will propose and consider all of these recommendations as one this evening. Specifically, the administration has recommended the approval of the first one, which is the Employee Group Dental Insurance, approving both incumbents, the Cigna Dental Health with no increase for the second-year renewal of a three-year bid proposal, and the dental, or Delta Dental with no increase for the first year of a three-year bid proposal, which proposal does include an increased benefit for the lifetime orthodontia from 1,100 to 1,500 as set forth in the board packet on page five and six. The second one is the Group Vision Insurance with iMen, which is not the incumbent rate represented on an approximately 35% decrease from the fiscal year 18 benefit plan year cost as set forth on the board packet of page six and seven. The third one is the Employee Group Life Insurance Renewal of the fifth year of the contract with the Standard Life Insurance Company, representing no change in premiums from the current plan year. See page eight. The fourth one is the Short Term Disability Insurance Renewal of the fifth year of the contract with the Standard Life Insurance Company, representing again, no change of the coverage rate by $10 per benefit provided while increasing the maximum benefit payable from 1,000 per week to 2,000 per week as stated on page eight. The fifth one is the Employee Benefits Consulting Service Renewal of the fourth year of the contract with the Holmes and Murphy Associations Incorporated for employee benefit consulting services with no change to annual fee provisions for the fourth year of a four-year bid proposal as set forward in page eight and nine. The sixth, only a few more to go, a flexible spending account and the HRA Administration approval of the incumbent ASI Flex for the provision of the flexible benefit and health reimbursement administration at a total annual expenditure not to exceed $16,000. That contract is a renewal at no additional cost for the life of the contract. These fees represent an approximate 5% reduction from the 2017-18 benefit plan year cost as on page nine and 10. Number seven, Flex Benefit Funding Continued at 1,108.94 per month, which has remained the same since the fiscal year of 2010. That's on page 10. Eight, Employer 403B Plan Contribution Continues at 7% for benefit eligible employees hired prior to June 1st of 2014, and the 8% for benefit eligible hired on or after June of the 1st of 2014, which reflects a 0% increase. That's on page 10 and 11. Number, the final one is the Employee Group Medical Insurance Renewal of the Contract for the Medical Insurance with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas City, which represents a 4.8% increase in the aggregated annual premiums as mentioned earlier on page 11. Are there any questions or discussions on the employee benefit contracts or renewals?
If the Board is willing, we can vote on them as a group as trustee Lawson has indicated. Trustee Ingram.
I do have one comment that I would like to make, and it kind of relates back to our last meeting when trustee Lawson made the comment about how important data was. And we all resonate, I mean, that resonates with all of us. But as I was reading through here and I see this represents no change, this represents 0%. You know, it's pretty impressive to me that, you know, we were able to keep our costs down and not have any additional fees. But in reading through the recommendation, it, it does indicate some of these represent a 0% change until you get to number four, which is the Short Term Disability Insurance. And it says that it represents no change in the actual paragraph, but in the recommendation, it does not specifically say that. I know it won't change our voting on those recommendations, but I would like to at least recognize that. And I just think it's important if you're reading these recommendations, and we've been consistently saying that there is 0% change or there's been a decrease, that it is just important to recognize that one as well. Small stuff, but I think when it comes back to data and how important that is to us, I just wanted to bring that up. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I would say again, for the benefit of the viewing audience particularly, that a lot of vetting goes on, a lot of discussion goes on in committee meetings regarding all of these several issues. And this is the time of the year when we have all of these come forward. So I would ask you, trustee Lawson, to make your items into a motion, please.
Okay. Let's see, I'm just making sure I've written. As I mentioned before, I suggest we vote on all the benefit contracts and recommendations together as if there's no specific items that the trustee wishes to vote on individually. It is the recommendation of the Human Resource Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the college administration's recommendations to authorize the president or his designee or to enter into any and/or renew contracts for the provisions of the benefits plan and administration of such plans as listed on number one through nine in the board packets, page five through 11. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. The second half of this is the policy recommendations that were brought forward. Ms. Colleen Kandler, Director of the Human Resources, reviewed the recommended changes to the policies in the hiring and onboarding sections of the college policy library. The HR Committee has reviewed the recommended changes to the policy in the hiring and onboarding sections. I don't need to go over the chart. You could see that in your board packet. Are there any questions or discussions on the recommending, recommended changes to these policies?
Do we have a motion for that recommendation?
Okay.
Just read the recommendation. It is a recommendation.
I just want to make sure. It is the recommendation of the HR Committee that the Board of Trustees accept these recommendations of the college administration to approve the modifications to the following policy certification and/or licensing, criminal background check, new hire paperwork, and posting for vacancy. Also to approve deletion of the following policies, application for employment, appointment to position, employment, interviews, medical examination, oath of employment, polygraph test, recruitment, screening of applicants, and work authorization as is shown in the board packet. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I would ask trustee Lawson, this was an issue that was up last month, and we had some, some questions. Did that all get taken care of in committee?
Yes. So the HR Committee sat down with me and walked me through the entire process from start to finish as if I was an applicant. So I got to see what that process was like, how many committees are involved when these policies come forward. It is quite extensive, and I felt very confident in the process.
Any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Does that conclude your report? Thank you very much. Because you did such a terrific job with that, we're going to ask you to give a learning quality report.
The learning quality had a wonderful sabbatical report on autism and the linkage and the bridging from when on... and the bridging from when autistic students come from high school and how we really work to support them through the college experience because it's quite a different experience. So that was very eye-opening, and our executive director, Chris Gray, has told us that, you know, using some of those social media platforms to help advocate for those sabbaticals to show the public what we're doing as well as helping to infiltrate, like, integrate some of those sabbatical results into our programs in our campus. The other big important thing is the Higher Learning Commission will be visiting on April 3rd or 30th through May 2nd, so we heard reports on the program assessment, modifications to our curriculums and programs, which are in the board packet, pages 59 through 60. I just kind of wanted to go over the accreditation process for the public because I know sometimes people don't really understand how important that is, and since this is a big visit that we're going to be having. Our college has been accredited since 1975 and currently at the close of an eight-year cycle. If you visit our website under the About section, then you go to the Accreditation section, you will be able to see a very extensive description of the process that our administration has put a ton of time and effort into. So I really encourage the public to visit that and see the work that has been done here to really make sure the quality of education matches the expectation of the accredited The accredited status means that the students and the public can have confidence in the worth of the institution and the program. We also discussed this opportunity in the National Association of Community Colleges of Trustee. I'm grateful for the shared excitement during our committee and my interest to submit nominations for a leadership conference hosted by the ACCT. This year, they are recognizing trustees, equity programs, presidents, faculty members, and board staff for their exceptional efforts to improve the lives of students and the nation's intellectual infrastructure. The learning quality with the help of Dr. Sobchak will be putting forward these nominations for the board approval, and that deadline is going to be June 18th, so that's very exciting. It is the recommendation of the learning quality that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the administration's to allow contract negotiations for groups to perform in the Carlson Center during the 2018-19, which is on pages 26 and 27 of that academic year as shown below. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions? And I know Emily's sitting back there awaiting this decision because she's just excited to announce the top-name billings that we probably will have. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Does that conclude your report?
Is there any other things that the committee members would like to add?
I just want to point out in the minutes here, and I know we don't try to take verbatim minutes, but, and I think I've made my position pretty clear on the assessment scores, but I'm not sure I used the phrase "fly in the face of" or described it as irresponsible to have ACT scores higher than KUs. I disagree with those. I think it is, I do think it is contrary to our mission, but if I was that inflammatory, I apologize to everybody in the meeting.
Wow, okay. Do we correct it, I guess? That's a good segue. Management meeting, Mr. Lindstrom has another engagement tonight that he had to attend, and so Mr. Musil will give the management report.
I should have mentioned during learning quality that if you haven't seen the Ukulele Orchestra of Great Britain, which is coming back this year, as better every two years, you need to go to that in the spring of 2019. It is a blast. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The management committee met at 8:00 a.m. on Wednesday, March 7th here in the boardroom. It was Trustee Lindstrom, Trustee Snyder, and myself. Our report can be found in full on pages 32 to 40 of the board packet. We had a number of items. Presentations from Dr. Larson, Executive VP of Finance, on an administrative services agreement with ABC Fry Wagner for storage of equipment. That can be found in the Consent Agenda, page 60. We had a presentation from Melinda Bryan Smith, the Director of Grants Leadership, on the college's grant activities, how we apply for grants, how grants are screened, what we do when we get grants. In the last fiscal year, our active grants portfolio totaled over $3 million, so it is a very critical portion of the college's overall mission. Rachel Lear is Associate Vice President for Financial Services, gave information about the 2018-2019 budget review, and the staff met on Thursday, March 8th with Paul Welcome, the Johnson County Appraiser, to learn more about what the appraised values look like and where that might lead for our budget planning and our April budget workshop and our May budget, management budget consideration, and ultimately our August budget approval for next fiscal year. Mitch Borders presented Soul Source Report. He gave the bid summary report, found on page 32 of the board packet. Dr. Larson gave an update on the Facilities Master Plan, and she really did a great job of going back to October of 2016 when we adopted the Facilities Master Plan. At that time, we did not adopt specific budgets, we weren't sure about construction costs. We did estimates that were based on the best numbers we had at the time. The Facilities Master Plan was implemented, and we started a request for proposal process, both for our construction managers and then construction companies, leading to a guaranteed maximum price process. We received guaranteed maximum prices on the CTE building and on the Fine Arts Graphic Design Building. Those are within the budget estimates that were made. The second phase of the Facilities Master Plan was based on more conceptual plans and really renovation and movement of things within, and we've learned that due to expanded scope of projects that will help provide functionality in those spaces, our budget is going to be higher than the estimates by about $7.4 million. The college administration has identified funding sources for that out of existing reserves, out of capital reserves, and through the benefits of our bond proceeds that we did last year, which yielded about $2.6 million in additional funds. So, they're moving ahead with programming on Phase Two projects. If there are questions about the Facilities Master Plan, it seems like it comes up in everything now because it is the biggest single initiative probably in the history of this college, and it affected the track program and otherwise, so if there are any questions, the people are here to ask them, or Barbara, or whoever, whenever you have questions. Rex Hayes, Associate VP for Campus Services and Facilities Planning, gave the monthly update on the capital infrastructure projects. That can be found on page 35 of the report. And we have one item for consideration. There was a bid in your packet for masonry repair that we seem to do every year and will continue to do for the life of the college. It's a recommendation of the management committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $140,390 from MTS Contracting, Inc., plus an additional $14,039 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $154,429 for masonry repairs. On campus, I will make this recommendation in motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
You may ask one question. Since Trustee Musil opened up that opportunity, does the Facilities Master Plan have any kind of a plan for campus signage?
And it does not. I mean, a campus signage plan was not part of the scope of the Facilities Master Plan. We agree that once the new buildings are constructed, it's probably time to start planning for an investment in new signage across the campus. You're aware that we do some fairly significant projects every year, whether it's a new roof. It's not unlikely that we could spend several hundred thousand dollars on new exterior signage, and it's something that we should start planning for, most likely budgeting in 1920 for a plan such as that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Sure.
Well, it's not just a matter of signage, I don't think, as the digital application and can
Yes.
people get on their phone and even on campus and get from one building to the other and find out where it is, so it's a great question, needed very much. Okay, any other comments from the management committee? Are we good? President's Recommendations, the first is the Treasurer's Report. Again, Mr. Musil, please.
On behalf of Trustee Cross, our Treasurer, the board's packet contains the Treasurer's Report for the month ended January 31. That begins at page 41 of the board packet. Items of note, on page one, the Treasurer's Report is the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund Summary. January was the seventh month of our 2017-2018 fiscal year. We received Advalorm Property Tax distributions of $53,378,696 from the county, and it was distributed to the general fund, about $50.3 million, to the capital outlay fund, $2.8 million, and the special assessment fund, $191,000. Also, during January, we received state operating grant payments of $10,345,000, and they were recorded into the general fund of $7.3 million and three point, a little over $3 million into the Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund. Our unencumbered cash balance as of January 31, 2018 was $119.7 million, approximately $7 million higher than at the same time last year, and all of the expenditures in the primary operating funds were within the budgetary limits we had approved. So based on that, it's a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ended January 31, 2018, subject to audit, and I so move.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Musil. Report to the board, Dr. Sobchak.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. I know we have two executive sessions immediately after this meeting, so I'll keep my report very, very brief. A couple points. First, if you haven't had the chance to look through the monthly report, it's outstanding in the sense of the thoroughness with regards to faculty and staff involvement in their respective fields as well as in the community. I think it's one of the finest ones we've had this year, so if you get a chance, please take a few minutes, it'll take you more than a few minutes to look through that. Today, I had the visit, a visit from Dr. Antle. Jay dropped by the office, and as he always does, he's promoting his sustainability program, and he asked me specifically to mention this tonight because he's very proud of it, as we all are. You know, the sustainability program draws reviews from really all over the country. It's highly regarded. On April 10th, we'll have a group from Minnesota, the Interlochen Center for the Arts and Facilities and Academics. A team will be down here looking at our composting, our farm, our academic integration, including sustainable sculpture contests, so that's quite a compliment. This is the only reason they're coming down to Kansas, to visit our sustainability program. Then on April 19th, Kansas City Southern Railroad will be touring our sustainability program, looking at our composting, the farm, renewable energy, stormwater installations. They will send 10 people. Both of those reflect really highly upon Jay's work. Today, with, I want to point out Lisa Elsner. Lisa was the individual cited with regards to her Special Olympics, the fact that she's been a longtime employee of the college. Lisa embodies really the spirit of this college. She's a highly valued member of our staff over in the Commons, and her determination and grit in pursuing what she does with regards to her athletic endeavors is remarkable. I enjoy seeing her every day. She advises me on my running because she has run just about every course in Kansas City. But I think it's important to note that she has an incredible zest for life, and she gets a lot of support from this community as well. So I think that's something to point out. Earlier this week, I had the chance to speak to the, at the naturalization proceedings. Over 400 people, I think 425 newly-made citizens of the United States obviously were in attendance for that. That's another example of the spirit of this college. If you get a chance to ever go to one of those, it's one of the coolest things that we do. They, afterwards, they inquired if they could do it again, if they could use our facility twice a year, and of course, I gladly offered it up to them. I think it's great to bring people on campus like that, and it was a wonderful evening. I know Trustee Lawson was on the front row. Angelina, would you like to make any comments?
Yeah, it was definitely an honor and a privilege to attend a ceremony like that. It was an overwhelming experience to just witness the sheer joy of everyone of 400-plus people clapping for the success of one country standing or someone from 30 members of that country. I think we had 17 countries represented. It was outstanding to just see the excitement that everyone was supporting each other. The one really moving piece was when, towards the end, they were everyone, we had someone sing the national anthem. Typically, we listen and observe that song, but to have the entire audience put their hand over their heart and sing along with that was something, and that happened to be my birthday that day. So it felt so warm walking out of that building and seeing the families reunited, and so warm, and I just want to make sure that everyone knows the power of Dr. Sobchak's speech that he gave at that meeting. It was so empowering to really embrace the culture that is coming together in this community as Kansas for new, brainy Americans. So thank you so much for your speech. It was very inspirational.
Thank you, Angelina. And Angelina mentioned the singer, Paula McGlaughlin. She's on staff here, saying "God Bless America" at the beginning, and then at the end, the Star-Spangled Banner. Tonight was another extraordinary evening, and I have to make a few comments about the public forum. First of all, I'd like to thank the board. One, for the support for what we're trying to do here, but also for the content of your comments. It was highly reflective of serious thought rationale that was put into your comments, and it was greatly appreciated, so thank you very much. It's kind of interesting to sit here and have your integrity assaulted. Obviously, those comments were pointed at me. There is nothing that can be said for this group, to this group, that's going to make them happy, other than the reinstallation of the program and the track. That doesn't fit in line with what we're trying to do for the good of this institution and for the good of this community. Specifically cited were two decisions. One, on the Cut Score issue, the controversy, he must have been talking to Dr. Arjo, I guess. No? And of course, this other one on the track. The commonality between those two decisions is that they were extremely hard, and difficult decisions oftentimes are not popular. Someone's going to be hurt, someone's going to be aggrieved. I can tell you that around this table, everyone is engaged in making those difficult decisions. It's something that none of us relish or enjoy because you invite situations like this. And obviously, it's hard on you too because you're experiencing the brunt of what's being said on social media and also what's being sent to you via email. But we'll continue to make those kinds of decisions. We're going to continue to do what we feel is in the best interest of this campus, of the students, and this community, and we stand strongly by the decisions that have been made. Lastly, the last individual, I want to make something clear. It made it sound like he has not had access to the administration. I'd like to ask everybody around the table here who's had dealings with the individual to raise their hands. Come on, John, I know you have to. Oftentimes, things are said that are, the accuracy is questionable. That particular individual has taken up countless hours of staff time, and in cases, we've responded, in some cases positively too, with regards, for example, to student voter registration and the accessibility or the availability of materials on the desk at the student, in the student center. So, it's challenging to sometimes be on the receiving end of that and really not to rebut. And I think that's a format that we've always used here, and I think it's the right thing to do. So again, I thank you for that. I anticipate this will be an ongoing issue until we're further down the road on our Facilities Master Plan. But I thank you for your efforts tonight, certainly on behalf of the administration, the college, and myself, and that concludes my report, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Dr. Sobchak. You know, I can't help but reflect on what Trustee Lawson has just said in terms of having over 400 people come to a naturalization ceremony to our community, and that was challenged in the open forum, that we are forgetting about the community. And when you have over 400 people from 17 countries come here to take a pledge that they want to be a U.S. citizen, it seems to me that that's but one example of how we try to react to the community. And I've had, I've had a chance, I think Trustee Musil's had a chance to address that group, and my understanding is that the Naturalization Office doesn't just ask anybody to do that. I mean, they're usually done on the courthouse, steps are in a courthouse, and so I don't know that we have abused our understanding of the community college and what it reaches out to. The second thing, and I want to thank all of the staff and the trustees, when I was out in Wyoming working on my doctoral, my advisor said, "Jerry, you kind of think you can solve everything, don't you?" And I said, "Well, I'd like to give it a try," and he said, "Are you willing to be kicked in the shins?" And I don't know about you, but when you get kicked in the shins, it hurts. And so, when you're in a position as elected trustee or as a staff member, a faculty member, a student, anybody, it hurts to get kicked in the shins sometimes, but that's part of the, that's part of the daily process. So I thank all of you for the amount of time and work you put into everything, and particularly those issues where people aren't happy with the decision. those issues where people aren't happy with the decision. I don't believe we have any old business tonight. We have no new business. That brings us to reports from boards and liaisons. The first is the Faculty Association, Dr. Arjo.
Well, good evening. These meetings keeping this interesting, you might consider charging a mission. The topic I thought I was going to talk about, I've decided not to in light of some things that was said, so I'm going to kind of audible here and change my address. First, just a quick announcement regarding the fact association. We've now had our initial round of negotiations, and that did pretty much occupy us at our last FA meeting, which was, I think, a week ago Tuesday. So interest is very high, as you would probably expect. A very large contingent of faculty showed up for that meeting. I almost had to go searching for a bigger room at the last minute, but we managed to squeeze everybody in. A lot of strong opinions, a lot of very dynamic and vigorous discussion. So protocol suggests I not say any more about that, so I won't, but we look forward to getting back to the table next week. Secondly, I'm going to kind of tie some remarks to what happened earlier with the public forum. First, just to be clear, I'm not sure where the linkage came from suggesting that this matter of dispute about the track and the track club or the track team is tied to faculty discontent specifically about the placement. That is not a topic that has been brought to the FA or we have discussed in the slightest, and no faculty member has ever approached me about the track business at all. So that's all I know about that. I'm not quite sure where that came from. But thinking about all of this, and yeah, it's going to be uncomfortable to have these kind of exchanges in the public area, but it is very critical to what we do here as a public institution and really part as a community. So I was thinking about all this because I was recently in Washington, D.C. for a conference. The conference is for the Asian Studies Development Program, a program that the college has been involved with in various respects for quite a long time now. So this is the second time they've had their national meeting in D.C., which is always a great place to go, but is also a very interesting place for this particular conference. It's an interdisciplinary group, but there's a lot of philosophy and a lot of political philosophy because there's a kind of a big question in Asian studies. As China in particular changes very dramatically economically and socially, there's a big question of what it's going to do politically, and there are certain questions about whether China can become a more democratic, a more liberal state. And there's a lot of thinking on behalf of some philosophers and political theorists, political scientists, that there's a tangent here or maybe even a danger of rushing, China rushing full forth into our style of political system. And some critics of Western democracies, some Chinese, some North American, tend to want to focus on the less successful parts of our system of government. So hearing papers about that and giving my own paper about that in the shadow of these great monuments, the Capitol Building, the White House, the Supreme Court Building, I'm always tempted to push back a bit and say, well, yeah, we got our problems, but there's still a dynamic political system here. But as I've said before, it really much depends, quite crucially, on the ability and willingness of people to get together when we have disagreements, no matter what our backgrounds, and try to work them out, at least to达到 satisfaction, at least in a reasonably civil fashion. And to bring this back to what this college is all about, I do think one of our core missions is creating and educating people so they know how to do this, that they understand the kind of system of government we have and what makes it work, which goes beyond elections, beyond the work of elected officials. So a lot of the people we heard from were former students, and however much we agree or disagree with what they said, I do think we should be proud of their ability to come up here and make their viewpoints clear and to trust a democratic process to try to find redress of their grievances. So again, I understand the frustration and hearing some of the things that were said. I understand there's perfectly good room for a lot of disagreement about this complicated and difficult issue, but overall, I think this is a good sign. So I'll stop there.
Any questions or comments of Dr. Arjo?
I'd just say, I agree, and I've always appreciated since I've been on the board that the president of the Faculty Association has almost to a T come here with respect and had civil discourse. We've had, we've had disagreements and tough issues. I think it's incumbent upon the faculty and the administration and the board to model what a community of diverse and differing views sometimes means, and you've been one of the, one of the models of that, Dennis, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dennis, you, I think every Faculty Association president is placed in a position to experience someone who's not happy with the Faculty Association decision, whatever that topic may be, and comes to you as the leader saying, you need to fix my problem or my issue. So you're one of those, you're one of those people that, whether it's philosophical or real, get kicked in the shins, and we appreciate your leadership.
I would agree with that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Dennis, did you present a paper in D.C.?
I did, yes.
What was it?
It was trying to defend a philosopher named John Rawls, who's kind of one of the most important political philosophers of the 20th century, who's a big defender of a certain model of what political philosophers call liberalism, which would be very broadly construed, against certain criticisms that Confucian philosophers, which includes some North Americans as well, some Chinese. So it's kind of technical, it was a rather technical paper, but the bigger picture is, again, to say there's still life left in.
Thank you for so doing. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I was going to ask for a copy. It's so technical. Now I'm afraid.
Happy to provide copies. As soon as I clean it up and get the references fixed, I will make it available. Thank you.
Thank you. The Kansas, the Johnson County Education Research Triangle did not meet. Dr. Lindstrom, or Mr. Lindstrom indicated to me there was no report, so we'll go on to the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees. We have not met since our last meeting. We have a meeting upcoming in June, so I have no report, and that takes us to the foundation, trustee Ingram.
And I do have a report. The Foundation Board Development Committee met on Wednesday, March 7th to finalize candidates for the 2018-2019 board slate. The recommendation for directors and members will be presented at the directors' meeting this coming April 25th. The Polsky Practical Personal Enrichment Series presents the film Big Sonia on March 21st at noon and March 22nd at 2:00 p.m. in Yardley Hall. The movie focuses on the life of Sonia Worsowski, one of the last remaining Holocaust survivors in Kansas City. There is also a showing at 7:00 p.m. on the 21st, but it has been sold out. This event is also sponsored by the Student Club, Anactis, the Honors Program, and the Journalism and Media Communications Department. All trustees are invited to attend the International Luncheon on Thursday, April 12th at 11:30 in the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy. This luncheon is in support of the International and Immigration Services Center. And finally, mark your calendars for the foundation's annual lunch to be held on May 22nd. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments of trustee Ingram? Next item is the consent agenda. It's a time on the agenda where we deal with a number of routine items. Unless a member wants to pull an item off for further discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
So a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have two executive sessions tonight, and for the first one, I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the JCCC Emergency Response Plan pursuant to the Kansas Open Meetings Act, exception relating to security measures to ensure the security of the college, its building, and/or its systems are not jeopardized. The session will last 30 minutes. We will resume the open meeting in the same location. No action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite Joe Sobchak, Terry Schlist, Barbara Larson, Mickey McLeod, Randy Weber, Karen Martley, Tom Pagano, Tanya Wilson, Chris Gray, Becky Scentliver, John Clayton, Lisa Pacer, and Greg Russell to join in this executive session. I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll start the executive session at, being we've gone quite long, why don't we start 7:30, okay? Give you 10 minutes, or can you do it in five?
Aye.
We'll start the executive session at 7:25? I meant, take a little break. We'll start the executive session at 7:25. Thank you. Good evening. We're back from, we're back in open session from our first executive session. No action was taken, but I would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing matters exempt from the Kansas Open Meetings Act relating to privileged conversations with legal counsel and the attorney-client relationship and consultations with the board's bargaining representation in employer-employee negotiations. This session will last 60 minutes. We will resume the open meeting in the same location. No action will be taken during this session. We would like to invite Joe Sobchak, Barbara Larson, Becky Scentliver, Jim Lane, Gurb Singh, Mickey McLeod, Randy Weber, Rachel Leers, Colleen Chandler, Tanya Wilson, and Melody Rail to join in this executive session, and I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
How much time do you need?
Three minutes.
Three minutes? We will begin this executive session at 8:00, and it will end no later than 9:00. Thank you. We are back from the executive session. No action was taken. We are now in open forum to adjourn our March meeting, and I would entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, I mean. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
[inaudible][1775.83]